What do we want? Respect! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Respect! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Respect! When do we want it? Now!
Union busting is disgusting!
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 When workers' rights are under attack, what do we do?
Stand up, fight back!
When workers' rights are under attack, what do we do?
Stand up, fight back!
What do we do?
Stand up, fight back!
What do we do?
Stand up, fight back!
What's disgusting?
Union busting!
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 This is my favorite one. Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Show me what democracy looks like!
This is what democracy looks like!
Is that dinner?
That's fluff. We had fluff.
Go to my shoulder. You don't need with fluff. That's why we had.
It actually looks like an inch thick.
Support our teachers! Bargain now! Support our school employees! Oh, right, right, okay. Support our school employees! Bargain now! 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 What do we want? Respect! When do we want it? Now!
What do we want?
Sex!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Respect!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Sex!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Sex!
When do we want it?
Now! What do we want? Sex! When do we want it? Now!
The people, united! Let the people be defeated! The people, united! Will never 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 be defeated!
It's actually much lighter. Yes. She's got a whole lot of those.
That's great.
No, that's fine. No, I haven't been anywhere.
Support our schools! Bargain now! 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 Support our schools! Bargain now!
I say union, you say power. Union!
Power!
Union!
Power!
I say people, you say power.
People! Power!
People! Power! I say union, you say power.
Union! Power!
Union!
Power!
I say people, you say power.
People! Power!
People! Power! I say workers, you say power.
Workers! Power!
Workers!
Power!
Democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is what democracy looks like! Show me what democracy looks like! This is 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 what democracy looks like!
Support our schools!
Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Support our schools! Bargain now! Who is school? Our school! 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 What do we do?
Stand up, fight back!
When union rights are under attack, what do we do?
Stand up, fight back!
When union rights are under attack, what do we do?
Stand up, fight back!
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 When you don't go to the back, you're listening.
This is what democracy looks like. 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 We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. One, two, three, four. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. One, two, three, four. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. One, two, three, four. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. One, two, three, four. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. One, two, three, four. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. One, two, three, four. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. Five, six, seven, eight. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. One, two, three, four. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. We know what we're fighting for. Five, six, seven, eight. Come on and negotiate. All right, I'm gonna say one more thing. I think it was like days before that. I mean, it's like, yeah, but then we had to go to the school committee. But, yeah, no, I don't know. It was people all over the town. Yeah.
So, well, you know, you wonder if you get two days back here. You think that maybe, or you like, I know that you call and it's just me.
Yeah. No, I find it sometimes good to watch the ground just up for group because, you know, I think we need to get that, you know, really soon. It goes to the, you know, but obviously we need to get the highest possible. We need to have a whole, not a whole fraction of course. It's, uh... I have a little bit of a, 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 I have[378.88]
... English and Creative Writing Teacher at the high school. And we've been here before. And in the eighteen years I've been here, I can't remember a time when we didn't negotiate before June or May because the school committee dragged it out in the hopes that we'd get tired. But this time it's unprecedented. Never, in the eighteen years I've been in here and some of my colleagues, longer terms, including retirees tonight, never has the school committee messed, violated the union contract, which is binding and sacred in a union. It's the lifeblood of the union. It's how we work, it's what we live by, it's how we feed our kids, send them to college, and hopefully retire on something other than a potato chip. Okay? So you, I don't know, because in the Amherst papers yesterday, there was another article. They're having the same problem. The teachers being told, no, no stepping pieces for you. I'm wondering if you all went to the same Wisconsin, to the same anti-union workshop presentation. The other thing is, so this is unprecedented on your part, and the question is for people, we give in to you now on step increases, what else are you going to do next time? You're going to extend the working hours, extend us into summer? What are you going to do? You can step all over the contract, but we're not going to let you do it if we can. Okay? The other thing is fiscal exigency. And I applaud you for coming up with a word that about nine-tenths of the people in Northampton can't even understand. They sold more dictionaries this week than ever. Now, fiscal exigency is an emergency. Is this why? This week I talked to an officer on the swing shift of the Police Association, and he informed me that you have hired nine officers, two working, and seven of the docs come out of the academy at thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, which comes out to about three-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars. That's even more than the rainy day fund. So where is the fiscal emergency? And then you add to that the little thousands that get spent, like the fire chief has redecorated the floor of the firehouse for twenty-eight thousand. Someone wants to make a park in front of City Hall for god knows how much more thousand. I don't know what it's for. Is it for the whinos and junkies to have a little better resting place at Pulaski Park? All right. Rest or not least, you are not playing ball with us. You're playing games. It's like limbo. And our stick used to be this long, and now the real wages stick is this long. Okay? You know limbo, the game How Low Can You Go? Well, that's the question to me. How low have you gone? You need to ask yourselves that. Thank you.
Thank you. There are three people here, Graham Heller, Anna McPerry, and Jack Reed.
Let's switch gears a little bit here. My name is Michelle Andrews. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Ryan Road School. These are three of my students from my classroom. Would it be okay if Anna passes out the letter that the students are going to read to you? So this all started with one student in my classroom at morning meeting.
Every time you clap, it takes away from their time. Let's let them have their own time.
With all due respect to Officer Stenang, who we...
One minute, I want to suspend this for a minute. I asked you earlier to be civil, and I really mean it. We're supposed to be modeling for these kids. You are embarrassed by our actions. Come on, tell us your side. We're embarrassed by your actions. You are concerned and embarrassed by our actions and feel like we are not being good models. I am asking you and us both to be good models. Could you please let the people speak without interrupting them? Thank you very much. Let's start over with the students.
Sure. With all due respect to Officer Stenang, who is our new All-Stars teacher, formerly known as Dare, this conversation began with our new program, and the children were talking about the differences between the two. They're going to share with you their comments and their concerns about the program. We worked on making a non-biased survey for the other two fifth grade classes. They went in, they spoke to the other two fifth grade classes, and this is the letter that resulted on behalf of the fifth grade at Ryan Road School.
Thank you.
Dear school committee members, on behalf of the fifth grade students of Ryan Road School, we present this letter to address our concerns about the All-Stars program. Although we agree that All-Stars teaches good manners and helps us learn about bullying, the program makes us often feel immature and we miss learning the mature topics that are taught through Dare.
Dare would help us feel more grown up. We know that Dare talks about topics we don't know enough about, like drugs and how to say no when someone asks you, "Do you want a cigarette?" It's more than drugs and smoking, too, but it teaches students about the consequences of stealing or any of our actions. In Dare, we are taught the consequences of putting drugs and tobacco into our bodies.
We think that the younger kids, like first and third, should learn All-Stars, and fourth and fifth should get Dare. Do you think that we could combine the two programs, Dare and All-Stars, and make Dare-Stars? Could you consider, could you consider, bringing the Dare program back for the fifth graders?
Thank you for hearing our concerns and considering our request. Sincerely, fifth grade students of Ryan Road School.
The next person after will be Claire Ann Williams, and the person after that is Rob Urbain.
Hi. My name's Manja Gary. I'm a parent of two children at Bridge Street School, one's about to graduate from JFK, and I'm also part of the PTO at Bridge Street, and I'm part of the school council. It was recently introduced to us to, well, first of all, I want to say that I'm totally in solidarity with all of you here, and I really appreciate you all being here. Thank you. But I also wanted to speak about the curriculum coordinator proposals that we're hearing about, and I realize that these are not set in stone yet, that they're just sort of being ideas that are thrown around. But we are in a position right now where we're in between the superintendents, and I want to make sure that the incoming superintendent hears the voices of the parents that I've been talking to. And what we've been hearing about the proposals by the curriculum coordinator, Mark Prince, is really an attempt to commit all the elementary schools to a certain model of a schedule and a timing in a curriculum, which I support overall. I think that basically all students should be coming through the elementary schools with a very similar education and understanding. But we're hearing that he's interested in cutting things like lunch and recess and cutting down the gym times. And I really, I'm seeing at our school already the effects of five-minute shorter lunch and recess, or that the kids are not eating and they're outside for a much shorter time. And all of the kids who have needs to go about and play and run around and eat their lunch and go to their music classes are being left out of that. And I really want to just say, as we go into this process with Mark Prince and his proposals and his ideas, that we really think about how we know kids learn the best. We know that they learn the best when they have lots of time to play outside, and they have lots of time to sit down in their lunchroom and eat a nice relaxed lunch, and they have time to enjoy their music classes and their art classes and their gym classes. And I just don't want us to think about kids as being, you know, miniature adults, because they're not. They're kids, and they're a very different body. And so I just would urge you to just really seek out the information and present it as publicly as you can, and get the feedback from parents and from teachers as we go through this process. Thank you very much.
The next two people after that are Trish Shelkey and Liz Ryan, and Mary Ellen Bruce.
Good evening. I'm reading some words written by Dinamac, a social studies teacher here at JFK.
Could you just identify us?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Claire Ann Williams. I'm the band director at JFK and also live at Riverside Drive in Florence. It was with great disappointment and a sense of betrayal that I learned the school committee's decision denied the May's Union collective bargaining rights. But I'm not going to take this time here to share in the popular opinion that calling fiscal exigency was akin to creating one's own rules in a cooperative game. Surely, if Northampton is in a state of fiscal emergency, this would be public knowledge. And furthermore, what makes this year's budgetary numbers different from any year in the not-so-distant past? Yes, this country and city are in a state of economic crisis, but that in no way warrants your actions of late. Last year, the union supported the passing of the override by showing that we, too, would give back to the city as residents and employees. This amount amounted to three days of pay, or roughly 1.5%. The union's decision to commit to this furlough was not one that all members bought into. Some vehemently shared their reluctance to support a furlough, when Northampton teachers are some of the lowest-paid teachers in the surrounding area. We took a zero raise only a few years earlier and have consistently had less-than-positive negotiating experiences for years on end. At the time, I thought their view was a bit uninspired and selfish. Surely, they could commit to an action that would help to encourage citizens of Northampton to pass an override that would save our school from catastrophic layoffs. I personally put myself out there as a supporter of the Yes, Northampton organization and the override, because I truly believe that was what was really needed in a time of economic crisis. And in a time of economic crisis was cooperation, creative thinking, and a commitment to collaboration, rather than an us-versus-them mentality. After hearing last week that the school committee voted to breach our contract and fulfill legal obligations and to refuse negotiations, I felt incredibly foolish that I had spent my energy striving for mutual cooperation. I am now seeing where some of my colleagues and veterans in the Northampton schools have obtained both their cynicism and reality. Your latest move has been divisive and uncooperative in a time that once again calls for collaboration. Again this year, as we have seen in years past, your tactic appears to be using a threat of job layoffs in a panic to create divisions in our union and in the community at large. This is not a tactic that is conducive to creating positive school system. There are several teachers retiring this year from the Northampton Public Schools. The gap of three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars can easily be closed through attrition, by hiring replacements at a lower salary cost. And it also appears that the rainy day fund this budget creates is on the backs of city employees once again. As a teacher in this district who has taught some of your own children and is now nearing the one-thousand mark, students in Northampton who have spent time in my classroom, I would like to believe that the lessons I teach on fair dealing, honesty, integrity, and individual responsibility would be modeled in the politics of this town. Thank you.
I know, I'm sure some of you support the arts. I want to say probably something that you know already, but I just want to say that that there are students in school for whom music, art, PE are the subject where they have the most, the greatest area of success. And for some students, it's the only area of success. We sometimes hear of a student who seems to be bombing out everywhere, and it's funny when you say, wow, that kid's one of the highlights of my day. And these are the kids that I worry about. I worry about these kids who come to school without feeling like anything means anything to them except one of those subjects. And they're already disillusioned, and they're hanging on just by a thread. I also worry about parents who feel like they're getting to the place where they want to send their kids out of district because of a better music program or art program. And so I would just like you to do the best you can to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next four people, first people are already up, the next are Mary Ellen Bruce, Amy Cagley, Constance Janik, and Liz Katz. The next two after that.
I'm Trish Shelkey.
And I'm Liz Ryan. We're both JFK parents and high school parents.
Yes.
We're also here because of the band, again. And I'm also a Northampton alumna, went through the public school system here.
So did I. Here we go. There's something new up here. It seems like only a few short months ago, a group of us were here in our band shirts, holding signs, doing exactly the same thing we're doing tonight, conversing about potential budget cuts and city financial issues that are impacting our classes, our learning environment, our educators, our administrators, and most importantly, our children. It was June 2009 when we bucked up and passed the override here in Northampton. The increase in taxes turned out to be just a patch on an ever-widening crack. We, the parents, are not here to criticize anyone or become an opponent of the school committee or any Northampton school administrator. None of us want to be in your shoes. And if Mike Rowe had a white-collar, dirty job, it would be a school administrator. We, the parents, are expressing grave concern about this year's proposed budget cuts that could again possibly eliminate jobs, add the classroom size, cut athletics and arts programs. And we, as parents, are truly concerned for our children and are truly engaged in the matter at hand. We are here tonight because we care and we want to collaborate with you. We have a thriving middle school band program with 120-plus students and a strong, close-knit network of parents who are willing to help in any way that might be useful. We are multi-talented, writing grants and fundraising more than thirteen-thousand dollars. This is only a small amount and is not enough to save these great programs and all of the great teachers, of which there are many spread over the school district. But you need to know we want to help. We have to find a solution together, as we did in 2009. We need city officials, school administrators, school committee members, teachers, and parents to open the lines of communication. We can patch it up again, and we will, but we, as leaders, need to look beyond the patch and find a long-term solution to the never-ending problem. A few of us are working hard at the state level to pass legislation for a fair tax law, which could potentially bring state money back to the city, but we need more voices. Many of us here tonight campaigned and campaigned hard for Vol. Yes! two years ago, because we believed and still believe our children deserve the best education public schools can offer. It would happen best with added funds, but for now, in this short time before fiscal year 2012, we again need to continue to patch the crack, whether that be juggling over and over again the school budget or instituting some more creative ideas we've yet to think of. We want to work with you, not against you, to solve this citywide struggle for the betterment of our children and the children to come. Our long-term goal is to build a new wall without a crack. A Northampton community of arts, music festivals surrounded by five colleges should have a fantastic and thriving public school system, and this is not the case. And we, as parents, are not satisfied with the current patch-the-crack technique. We want answers, and more and more importantly, we want solutions. Other than safety, education should be our number-one priority as a city, state, and a nation, and it is not. We lag behind most of the rest of the civilized world in how we educate our children. We, the parents, are seeking a long-term solution. We're tired of struggling year after year, putting the schools back together. Let us know how we can help. Thank you for your time.
The doorbell means you hit three minutes, so if you try to keep that in mind, because there's lots of other folks that want to leave.
My name is Mary Ellen Bruce. I do not have any children in the Northampton School District, and I'm not an employee of the Northampton School District. I do live in town, and I am very, very proud of the achievements of the Northampton Public Schools and the teachers who have made those achievements possible. I'm very disappointed in the conduct of the school committee and their refusal to negotiate with the school union over the issues which they face. Every parent, every teacher in this district teaches children from the time that they are little children till the time that they graduate from high school, that to become an adult in this society, one has to confront one's problems, not hide from those problems, sit like a civil human being at the table, discuss those problems, and come to a solution which is rational. As good citizens, those same teachers and parents teach their children that they should not look for ways to circumvent the law, but in fact, to work with the law, not find loopholes, which are controversial to explain their position. I would urge this Northampton School Committee to go back to school. There's a lesson here that you have forgotten, that I'm sure very good teachers taught you in the past, and that you should revisit and you should think about seriously, negotiate with your school union. Thank you.
So the next four people after Ms. Cagley are Constance Janik, Liz Katz, I'm hoping I'm getting this name right, Antigone Samakis, Jack Misery, and then the final two are Rose Bookbinder and then Charles T. Peterson.
My name is Amy Cagley. I'm a parent of a Ryan Road kindergartner, a member of the PTO, a new board member of the Northampton Education Foundation. I'm here tonight because I am extremely concerned, as are several parents also here with me, about the large class size of the rising first-grade class at Ryan Road and at the elementary schools across the district. This concern is exacerbated by the fact that a teaching position, one that could have solved this problem, was cut from Ryan Road despite the large size of this rise in first-grade class. In reading through coverage of last year's struggles over the school budget and thinking about what points I wanted to raise, I was struck by some of the arguments offered by the former superintendent and the budget committee during last year's discussion. It offered in support of the initial decision to reinstate fifth-grade teaching positions at Bridge Street and Lead Schools, leaving only Ryan Road, then as now, with very large class sizes in a particular grade. Two arguments still ring true now as they did then. First, the former superintendent suggested that allowing one school, then Bridge Street, to have significantly smaller class size in one grade than the fifth grade would, quote, "open up opportunities to accept school-choice students, a revenue generator for the schools." I would respectfully suggest that similarly, reinstating a teacher to Ryan Road, thereby creating smaller class sizes for the first grade, would likewise serve to open up a certain number of school-choice slots, generating additional revenue for the schools. Conversely, if nothing is done, I would note that the city stands to lose considerable funds from parents who choose alternative districts or charter schools that offer a more acceptable student-to-teacher ratio. Secondly, during last year's budget discussions, it was noted that the budget committee, in reaching their funding decisions, had decided to, quote, "prioritize the needs of younger students." They were speaking then about second and third graders. I would ask you again to prioritize the needs of younger students, specifically first, second, and third graders, by reinstating a teaching position at Ryan Road. I would note that money does not need to be found to place additional first-grade teachers at all of the elementary schools. Benefits could be felt across all elementary schools by the addition of one teacher in one elementary school. As shown last summer, the superintendent and the budget committee have been willing in the past to allow one elementary school to have lower class sizes in a particular grade, acknowledging that the space opened up for school-choice students is beneficial to the entire school district. Ryan Road Elementary, by virtue of both its anticipated first-grade class size and its loss of a teaching position, is the appropriate home for this additional teacher. Thank you again for the opportunity to continue discussing this with you, and I would ask for your help in addressing this large class size.
Thank you.
My name is Constance Janik. I live at 44 Penn Castle Drive in Florence. Last week, I spoke at the city council meeting about the concerns that parents of Ryan Road Elementary have for next year's proposed class sizes in the first grade. As stated, the current proposed plan is to have two classrooms with 23 students in each, with the possibility of rising to 25 students. First grade is an important year for children. It is a year to learn the fundamentals that will provide students with the skills necessary to be successful in future grades. Tonight, I have a personal story of why I feel concerned about the large class sizes and the impact it may have on my son. In his first year of kindergarten, our son was one of the youngest in his class, and at the end of the year, still struggled with reading. With the help of his teacher, my husband and I made the choice to hold our son back last year and have him repeat another year of kindergarten. I feel that we made the right choice for him. This year, our son has been able to make progress due to the extra help he has been able to receive. Our concern is that with the student-teacher ratio that is being proposed for next year, our son will again struggle. Something I didn't have planned whenever I wrote this, that I found in my son's backpack today at five o'clock in the afternoon, it's an example of the effects that this is already having on this particular class. I wrote this letter to my son's teacher a couple of days ago, and the reply, the question was that I hadn't heard when the end-of-the-year kindergarten play was going to be this year. I thought maybe perhaps my note wasn't put in the backpack, or I overlooked it or whatnot. The teacher's reply was, "No play this year. Too many children still practicing inappropriate school behavior. It seemed too overwhelming." So, an example that it does affect our children and what they can get out of their school. Our son's story is one of many. Each family has their own reasons for being concerned over the student-teacher ratio that is proposed and how it will affect their own children. We currently have in our school a fifth-grade teacher that could be reallocated to the first grade next year, and she is no longer needed in the fifth grade, to make our children's education a priority by keeping this teacher in our school.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Katz. I live at 629 Berks Pit Road. I first want to acknowledge that I know you are thinking a superintendent of our school system, and I wanted to thank you for your time, your hard work, and careful consideration for this very important mission. However, I am here also as a concerned parent of a kindergartner at Ryan Road School. As you heard, there are several of us here. I'm also the vice president of the PTO. I am repeating a little bit, but as you already heard, the fifth grade currently has three fifth-grade classes. I'm told that earlier this year, when the upcoming budget was being considered, that third-grade teacher position was cut. However, it turns out that the shortfall of the budget is not as dire as it was predicted at the time that that teaching position was cut. We have 46 kindergarten students right now. There are two classes of 23. Each class has two eights. Because of the students coming from the Hill Institute, one to two additional students are expected to enroll this summer. Even assuming that the class size stays exactly the same, two first-grade classes of 23 are simply too large, especially in the first grade. The children are only six and seven years old, they are learning to read, and they are learning the basics of math. I looked at some enrollment numbers. Across the district, in next year's third-grade class, there are a total across the entire district of 182 students projected in 10 classes. In the first-grade class this year, there are 198 students with only nine classes. So the third grade has 182 students with 10 classes, the first grade has 198 students with only nine classes. That's clearly not fair. I'm not requesting the third-grade teacher be cut. I am requesting that a teacher be restored to Ryan Road so that we can have a third first-grade class. An aid in the classroom is insufficient. If there's a third-grade class, we will retain our current students, and we will gain students because of school choice. When we get more school-choice students, we get more money. If the class sizes are too large, we will lose students to choice. So in the end, this would be a responsible financial decision. Thank you very much.
My name is Antigone Samakis. I live at 497 Berks Pit Road. First, I'd like to say that I'm absolutely honored for my child to see me speak out against an injustice. We are absolutely role models for our children in this room. That's not what I came to talk about. I'm also a role model in another capacity. I am privileged to call myself a teacher at our incredibly high-achieving Northampton High School. I am a taxpaying resident in this city, and I have a soon-to-be-school-aged child that will be in kindergarten one day. So I have several concerns about this decision. From ESPs to custodians, secretaries, school nurses and teachers, we have never acted in a way to suggest that we wouldn't give if asked this year. And I simply want to close in saying, when I tell my four-year-old when he's done something I haven't approved of, "This is not okay."
I'm a concerned parent at Ryan Road School. We heard earlier from some very articulate fifth graders. We heard earlier from some very articulate 5th graders from Ryan Road School. These children had the benefit of three classes. This allowed their teachers to actually teach these children. I'm here briefly to talk about a 3rd teacher for the 1st grade class at Ryan Road School. The class size that the 1st graders at Ryan Road School are going to be in next year is one of the largest in the district, from my understanding. I also understand that this is a difficult problem that can't be solved today, but if we work together over the next few months, the problem can be solved, just like it has been solved in the past. We need to remember, this is for our children, and everybody in here is here for our children. Thank you.
The last two names I have are Rose Bookbinder and Charles T. Peterson.
Hi, my name is Rose Bookbinder, and I'm here wearing two hats, one is an alum of the Northampton school system, and two as an organizer with the United Auto Workers, UAW Union. I'm proud to stand here with the staff of the Northampton school system and with the community. I moved back to Northampton because of my wonderful experience going through Lead School, JFK, and the Northampton High School. And I know that we need to continue to inspire new teachers to join this school system, and if we're going to be making cuts and not bargaining in good faith, that we're not going to be inspiring more amazing teachers and staff to come to this school system. And now, as an organizer, I've been organizing for the last five years and have come to many corporations who have been using horrible anti-union tactics, and I'm just shocked to see some of these very similar tactics used today by this school committee. And I guess I just feel, you know, I just feel like I want to say shame on you for following in those footsteps of corporations.
I'm also a supporter of the Northampton teachers and staff, and I just wanted to come and express some of my...
What's his name, Charles Peterson?
Oh, Charles Peterson. I'm sorry, I just said my name, I didn't think I had to repeat it. I was just shocked to hear about the years of 0% increases given to the staff and educators in Northampton at the same time. Gas, food, other prices are going up, and it just seems that the Northampton School Committee has an insatiable appetite for money that should be going to the Northampton teachers, and they can't even take yes for an answer. After years of get-backs, now they want to take away the 4% step increase that was already negotiated in good faith, already in the contract, and attack the lowest-paid teachers in the district and try to pit the workers against each other. And I'll also see that there was a delay until June before there was any sort of negotiation. I'm sure people were wondering about that the whole time. Now it's clear that the school committee and the mayor were at the Walker School of Negotiation for all this time, trying to figure out how to attack the union here. And unilaterally imposing changes in working conditions, pitting workers against each other, it's embarrassing, and absolutely shame on you. So you all should resign, let someone who is willing to negotiate according to the law and in good faith take over for you and actually fulfill the job that you should be doing. And mayor, if you're talking about setting an example, if there's such a fiscal emergency in the city, you should refuse your salary until this is resolved to demonstrate that this isn't about, that this isn't about trying to break the union, but if it is a fiscal emergency, let's actually see some evidence of it.
Everybody who spoke, and we're now moving to the regular session.